Hi, this is Rachel. And she will be calling for righteous fans, one nation, under God, and individual truth, liberty, and justice for all. Hope you're enjoying this cool weather like I am. Beautiful evening and day. I'm called on special leave tonight for one purpose only, and we'll get into that in just a moment. I'd like to ask Rachel to do a roll call first, please.
Mark Baranowski.
Here.
Dwayne Hegel.
Here.
Deborah Ryan.
Excuse Mike Rushing.
Here.
Al Taitis.
All right, we have no citizens being to address the board tonight, no guest speakers, uh, no minutes to approve. All we do have is a letter of resignation to accept and then to appoint a clerk in one of his place. So I will read the letter and then we'll ask the board to act on it. Riley Township Board of Trustees. This letter informs you that June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, I will be resigning my seat as Riley Township's clerk. At this time, I would like to thank the residents for their support and confidence in me throughout the years. I would also like to thank the office staff for all their support. I would not have been able to accomplish everything I have done without them. I have learned a lot in the last six and a half years about local government and the impact it has on our daily lives. And I look forward to seeing how the township grows and expands in the years to come. Best regards, Deborah Ryan. Wish her all luck in the world as she goes forward. Uh, we need a motion tonight to accept a letter of resignation.
Oh, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Or I'd like to do that by a roll call as well.
Dwayne Hegel.
Yes.
Mike Rushing.
Yes.
Mark Baranowski.
Yes.
Al Taitis.
Yes. Motion here. All right, we're here tonight to, um, to appoint a clerk. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about that and then we'll get into the business of it. Whoever's appointed tonight will serve until the twenty twenty-two midterm election. At that time, of course, they would have to learn to be elected to continue in that position. Um, I do want to mention also that, uh, I'll read in fact from my township, on my MTA manual. The statutory duties of clerk are numerous, technical, and legally essential to the proper operation of municipal government. And of course, there's a long job description that I won't get into tonight. So what we have to determine is who in our audience this evening, our residents, is interested in having the board consider them tonight for this position. And once we have determined that, um, I will ask if those who are interested would like to say a few words. How, um, why they're here and why they're interested tonight in the clerk position. And then we will ask the board to, um, enact. So who is with us tonight in our audience that might be interested in being considered this evening for our position? Okay, we have Deborah Cooper in the back, uh, Dawn Beam here, anyone else that's interested, right? Okay. Um, I do have to mention that, um, I was informed by MTA that if the board chooses to appoint an employee of the township, that employee has to resign their position. And after they've resigned, the board has the option to reinstate that employee or not, however they would so choose. So I, and what I'm trying to say is that employee can't be an employee at the same time and hold a life official position. So keep that in mind tonight, and I just mentioned that because Deborah forced employee. All right, um, how do we want to start this tonight, board members? Of course, we get to our discussion of like, uh, concerns, questions, uh, those of the two ladies that are here tonight are interested. Uh, would either of you like to stand and say a few words about why you're interested or why you think you might fit, uh, fit the position? Deborah, would you like to stand about the position?
Well, uh, I'm interested in the position because I've been around township for, uh, the two thousand fourteen, um, prior. I do have a question first.
Sure.
You, you mentioned that I cannot move the position, and I do understand that, I am well aware of that, that rule. But also, that would apply to Dawn. Because she's a planning commission member and a county officials' secretary. That is unique, planning commission, unique to that, um, law or whatever.
Yeah.
Township, but don't just. I did want to also state that I was under the understanding that it took a full board to accept a resignation.
Yeah, I don't believe that's correct because the clerk is not here, we still have a forum.
Okay, I thought it was a full board.
Yeah, the only thing we can't do without a full board here tonight is other business. We can do the business at hand, but we have to have a full board to do anything in addition to appointing a clerk tonight.
Um, I've got, uh, two thousand fourteen, um, I'm well-acclimated with the office, with township procedure, with township laws, um, I'm well-versed in VSMA software, which will be utilized for general ledger, um, council table, um, and, you know, submitting forms to, um, local government, um, and as well as federal government for withholding, um, you know, um, paying bills. So it's not just, you know, you're coming in and elections, I'm also certified election, um, inspector. So that's something that, uh, raises a lot on a clerk, is the election process itself.
True.
And I've been, uh, uh, election.
Okay. Okay. Fine.
But basically, I didn't realize that this was, um, like an interview process.
No, it's not, I think it's, it's.
No, that's okay, but was this, was this put out other than the, you know, like, first, you know, the entire community? I mean, I'm, I'm saying that, yes, I want this position, but I'm also stating that there's a lot of other people in the community that might have liked this opportunity as well. And I do know that the board does not have to, um, solicit people for this position either. So, uh, that means that.
Right, it wasn't put out because the, uh, clerk was not officially resigned until we just accepted her letter of resignation. Now we have forty-five days from her last day yesterday, so we have to fill that position. We hope to do that tonight. So I wanted to say this also, that from the moment we just approved this letter of resignation, the township has no clerk and has no deputy. Because the deputy goes with the clerk, and whoever's appointed as clerk will have to, of course, put their own deputy in place. At this time, we have no clerk or deputy.
And when would this hearing take place?
Uh, it'd take place tomorrow morning. Where it makes that decision tonight. And I would hope that it would because, in fact, it could take place here tonight, even after the board makes a decision. Better, the sooner the better. Were you through, Deborah?
Yeah.
Okay. Go into two months.
I think, um, I'm well-aware of that. I understand the duties between the difference, uh, boards that we have, we have more to play for, because we have an advisory board. And obviously, it's a public of interest to be involved. Um, I am interested in the interim position. After doing more research into what it entails, I've had several people pretty much kind of mentioned to me, you know, that's right up your alley. You know, with my background, my experience, um, I have a little broad scope of everything. I've been on the planning commission now for five years. Um, when Sue, my neighbor, had approached me for opening up on the planning commission. And actually, the, um, the first person to introduce me to, uh, the clerk was when we first moved out here, she lived out here for twenty years, was Paula. And I always remember Paula, uh, she was so friendly. She knew my parents, she came from Columbus. And she knew everybody and every, and everything. And so she, we built our house, she first proposed to me. Hey, you should be come out, come out and be on the planning commission, you know, you're going to focus. So that was my first impression of being up to the area, because we love the area.
Yeah.
Been here for twenty plus years, uh, been on the planning commission for five years since Sue, she had to go out there. Do you know, I, I had, um, uh, I had administrative background, and she felt that I would be a good fit for the planning commission. So thrilled to be a part of with that group and helping, uh, the township grow many ways and be organized, um, and move forward on ordinances and special use applications, uh, keeping those recordings of the men and, uh, major, uh, firm. Um, my experience in the past, uh, is pretty sensitive. And as I'm looking through the job duties and the responsibilities of this work, I pretty much have background and experience in all areas except for elections. If I'm willing to, um, dive into and, uh, learn and grow in that area, it's a very important aspect. Um, being a part of that, uh, I've never been afraid of a challenge. A lot of times when I start new positions, like, that's by fire kind of thing, where there's nobody in there helping me enter into a new position. My background basically is, um, well-versed in computer app, computer applications. I've done payroll for five years, I've done a pay-to-countable for five years, I have finance and accounting background for two years, and, and accounting team leadership for two years as well. Um, What's my experience though, uh, is when my kids were very young. So my kids, you know, and, um, were really young, family was more important to me at that time. Uh, having a student with, um, extra needs, basically, took a lot of my time and I needed flexibility. That's where the planning commission really fits really well with me at the time. My kids are now in college, they're independent, all that hard work really paid off, my kids are doing great. Um, and I will look for more opportunities to be a part of my community. And I did bring copies of my resume if you would like, um, some cash moves out to you.
Put them here on the table, go ahead and pass them on.
Yep. I'm so sorry.
As we move forward tonight, uh, thank you. Does the board have any questions for either Deborah or Dawn in regards to their goals or, uh, experience or whatever? Give it just a minute to look those over and, uh, you have any questions for Deborah or Dawn, if you have a dream to ask them before we get into the process of appointing someone? Questions? No, any thoughts? I have one, uh, Dawn, just an opinion line. Tonight I would prefer, if I had the option or the choice, to keep our office people in place where they are now, I think they're doing a good job. And, uh, so that's probably the way I would vote. If there's any other thoughts or opinions, please feel free to share those now.
I, I would like to see Rachel Reed, uh, uh, be clerk, uh, she was definitely, uh, there side by side with, uh, Debbie during, during her, uh, her process, so I'm, I'm, uh, would like to see her.
I should not see her again tonight.
Well, that, this is, this is my opinion, you know, and, uh.
Well, I haven't included her because I didn't see her.
I, I would like to see her.
Thank you, Mark, I'm going to define that.
Okay.
I do appreciate the confidence in me, thank you.
All right, any other thoughts or opinions by the board's members? Again, let me remind, uh, both Dawn and Deborah that, uh, uh, this position, it will be in place, it's not an interim clerk, it is a permanent clerk until the internal elections in twenty twenty-two, so. They will have the full responsibilities of the clerk. And I'm certain that Deborah was correct in that Dawn would have to resign her position as well. Um, where she can play if that's the way you want to choose, so. So do we have, uh, any other opinions or discussions? We have a motion tonight. Anybody want to make a motion? We're not going to get anywhere looking at each other.
Uh, just me personally, I'm thinking, two girls we have in front of office, they're, are very knowledgeable with the, uh, software, very helpful with me coming into office. I'm thinking, we add someone new, if we do need that help, they are there to help versus if Deborah steps up and takes that position, we're training someone else on the floor. I'd like to make motion to hire Dawn.
All right. We have a motion on the table tonight to, uh, appoint Dawn to the position of clerk. Is there support for that motion? All right, I'll support that motion. Um, we have a motion and support tonight to appoint Dawn Beam as clerk. Uh, let's take a roll call vote. Rachel, would you?
Thank you for doing that.
Mike Rushing.
Yes.
Mark Baranowski.
No.
Al Taitis.
Yes.
Dwayne Hegel.
No.
All right, motion with loss. Do we have any other, uh, motions tonight? I will remind you that if, um, we don't make a decision here tonight, um, we have forty-five days before the county will step in and do a special election, fill that position and, of course, charge the township for that election. That's the process. We don't make a decision tonight. Now, I also want to remind you that, um, um, it may be a payless payday through those forty-five days, because a clerk, of course, actually knows that payroll. So, uh, without a clerk and a deputy, uh, there will, will not be any payroll. So, uh, I'm open tonight to any other, uh, motions or suggestions. Dawn, come. I get just a minute to think about it. Really not excited about having your county committed to an election. It was about, that's maybe choose to go, but that's the way it would go. Yes, comment, Doug?
Yeah, I have a comment, and it says, can we get one? My suggestion is to put it out there for the township people.
We certainly do that, we have time.
You have time to do that and maybe bring in some others and and we may come back and circle back to the two that you have now, or you may come up with other candidates and you can get a form to support, but you, you need three, and doesn't look like that recording any way today.
No. No, and, and we can do that now, we can publish this petition now that, um, her resignation, the clerk's resignation is, I think, final.
Yeah, just, you know, put a date on it, it's like two weeks or something.
Yeah, we certainly will ask the office to publish this petition, um, and then we'll have to come back, uh, either, uh, July sixth or the next meeting or before the, if we feel the need to. So I had a vote for you to kind of settle this tonight, but, uh, that looked good. Who's the deputy clerk? The deputy clerk wants Rachel Reed, but when a clerk resigns or any elected official, the deputy goes with them. Okay, so now she's unemployed. She's still, she's still an employee, she is not a deputy. Okay. All right, any other thoughts tonight or motions? Any?
Yes. Just curious, if this spreads out, will the, uh, first case scenario potentially forty-five days, and you have a special election forty-five days, because it'll never be the office meeting. So if you do take forty-five days from today, you have July meeting, still end up the same results, nobody else comes forward, nobody gets appointed, so just one worst case scenario. What happens to payroll and bills, everything within the township for forty-five days?
That, that's a good question, it's not just payroll, but it's all the bills that are out there. So, um, Doug, any thoughts on that?
I'm not positive, but I know that the treasurer has some deeply in that, and I'm certain that with the board, the, you know, passing something, that they'd not be able to signature with the, um, treasurer, the deputy treasurer.
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't know, but the, yeah, two signatures on those checks that were. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, you have format, if I can, you also got the same format at the bank, the, uh, signatures on record at the bank, you don't see that consign. But you could step in, I don't believe, as supervisor and approve paying bills. Or any of, comes back, you also have the clerk is by state law the keeper of all records for all townships, just, I got a little disoriented, this, uh, this branch. Uh, at that point, all mail, all any mailings, any notifications, anything, the clerk is the person that keeps the record. I don't know if you contact MTA, but without a clerk, who is going to be the designated person to keep those records? If you don't have deputy clerk, I don't think you can have a, a township employee that they don't have statutory authority to be responsible and held, a legal responsibility, liability, it's the township having those records has to be told by an elected person. And by state law, that is the clerk's position. I did ask MTA, uh, earlier today, when their attorney, uh, what happened, what happens when we have a deadlock, which we have here tonight, and she said, you have no clerk. Not just that, so that's where we're at tonight. We have no clerk, and it looks like we have no clerk for a while now. I don't know what the timeframe would be if we make a motion tonight here to publish this, if we will. Um, I don't know what the timeframe is to get it out there and to give it enough time to find out, uh, who may be interested in the position. Deborah, do you know something about that?
Well, the clerk, when she's, when she signs the check, that's a warrant, and then when the treasurer signs it, that's the check. So my question to you, since you did not close this meeting, can you rescind and not accept her resignation? And, or say that you will accept it on the next meeting of the sixth? That way she is obligated, or Rachel is obligated to perform that duty until such a time.
Go ahead, Jim. Uh, I don't think we do, they, they would like to take a big lax scan and send the resignation to Ralph, and I think.
You can update, uh, midterm or a replacement, uh, board number thirty days before their resignation takes effect.
Well, the resignation is final now.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, because the board.
The board is already announced, so, um, the board does have the authority to appoint someone, uh, tonight, I believe, um, in that function of clerk. But, uh, again, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable doing that. I, I think MTA said if we have a deadlock or we're just fighting, uh, as it is tonight, we still have no clerk. So I think that's where we're at right now, and, uh, there's no such thing, MTA told me today as an interim clerk. Because the clerk is appointed again post the midterm elections in twenty twenty-two, so there's no such thing as a interim clerk. Either we have a clerk or we don't have a clerk. And, uh, it stands, where it stands right now, we don't have a clerk. And if we don't have a clerk, we don't have a deputy. Because the deputy works under the direction of, of the clerk. Hell, it's good, yes, historically, at the county, during the eleven years that the county existed, we had uh, resignations to county commissioners for health reasons, that they knew of the area, and also a road commissioner that got reappointed. The road commissioner took, uh, they were appointed in St. Clair County by the county commissioners. It took four votes, it went three, 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 and three, three, and three, finally overblamed four, two. And we got a road commissioner to all that things, but same thing happened, it took three votes for a county commissioner to fill one of the bases. Get him in three, 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 and then four, two. We got it, so we just, that aren't, we decided that, you guys decided what you wanted, right? But at, at some point, you're going to have to make a decision.
Yeah.
And the position has to be built, and that's what we did at the time, we filled the position. So, and those votes took, that night, we didn't postpone anything. We took it and we filled that position that night, two to that. So I didn't hear, everybody sitting here, nobody gave a motion to appoint Deborah, thinking get a vote on her. Uh, it might end up two, two also, but that's just, right, you guys have been here for a long time, sir. And it's really special, I've served as, uh, Riley Township supervisor, it is a, a special, uh, once you get that, you're voted into office. And it isn't your seat, it's the people, like, my incoming supervisor, I'm going to change the world. But then once I got in that seat, that wasn't my seat. And Doug and me had some conversations, and they weren't most relevant. Uh, I did take the position. But the way I took my position as township supervisor was to include everybody in the audience. And if you notice, uh, we got a lot of people who were meetings, uh, that started attending. You need to do it to the best interest, right? Whatever that is. Absolutely, this is not, uh, a, a personal preference thing. This is doing what's in the best interest of the residents that have put us in this position.
In the best interest of the residents in this township, I enjoy my job, I love my job, I withdraw.
All right, thank you. Doug, do you have comments?
Certainly, I have a desire to say that, you know, it shouldn't be yourselves, it's the government, it's all the votes, and that's what it is. So that's what needs to happen. I have a feeling, you've got to run the town.
I, I'm, absolutely, I don't think it's in the best interest of township tonight, to sit here and do what we've just done. Maybe in our best interest, but if not in the township, I think we need to make a decision tonight, and I don't, we would. So, um, I asked these two guys to return it because they both been supervisor, chair of band, was true. So Deborah, you have just been drawing your name. So does that make any difference with the two board members that voted not to, uh, appoint Dawn?
I just was wanting to find out.
I think you were trying out.
Sorry for applying.
He has a, he has a personal interest here.
Yes, certainly.
I know that Dawn is very capable.
She's been our, our secretary on the planning commission. She detail already. She takes on responsibilities and that, that sometimes we don't even think of. And, uh, I, I think it would really help the township if you guys gave her a chance of this shot. I think it's been personal, but I think she. Well, your personal opinion's important tonight. You're all residents here. Yeah, we're going to just open it up for a discussion tonight.
That was one good day.
Uh, Dwayne knows when I was on, been serving on the planning commission since, I mean, 2000, Chad. And Dwayne's been there all along. And at one point, the prior reporting secretary did a very poor job. Then I started doing it, and in comparison, I thought I could have picked that. There's no common way that I do with Dawn this much. She is the, the best, you know, I've been county commissioner. She is just fantastic. And I would hate to lose this reporting secretary.
Yeah.
But you got to do what's in the best interest of the right.
Right.
Uh, that means whoever on the county that wrote that clerk, if Dawn ends up potentially anyways, uh, getting another reporting secretary, uh, that, that's what we have. Yeah, I think it'd be much easier to fill that position than the clerk's. So, um, we need to learn around planning as well, but, uh, if the board chose to appoint her, then we would, of course, do that. Any other thoughts or opinions tonight, comments from residents? Your opinions matter. And, uh, we're open to hear them before we take another poll. All right, um, in light of Debra withdrawing, we're going to make a motion to appoint Dawn Bean as clerk of the township. Is there support for that motion?
I'll segment.
All right. Richard, would you please take another roll call vote?
Mike Rushing?
Yes.
Dwayne Hegel?
No.
Al Taitis?
Yes.
Mark Baranowski?
No.
All right. We will, uh, I will ask, I'll make a motion that we, uh, publish this position and, uh, whatever newspaper we use for all our publishing. Um, and, uh, we'll have to give it, I'm assuming, a couple of weeks correctly if I'm wrong, Debra. Would it take more than a couple of weeks to?
I think it would. I think it would be posted for 10 days or seven days for that matter.
Okay.
You know, if you guys want to be the supervisor, tonight, call another special meeting, and then that will be posted. So that would be your time.
What if we set this? Yeah, we can add it to our July 6th meeting. Yeah. Alan, that should be a couple of weeks, yeah. Um, legally, it can break two, wherever Debra is needing work now, that they can't get paid. Check with MTA, but I don't even know if you work in the office. You can't. If you're working, you have to legally get paid, whatever the hell it is that comes with that position. But if you're not getting paid, can you hold somebody to pay because your clerk potentially pulled you back days?
If you don't work, the township comes to trial. That's, uh, that's, that's what I'm back, but.
Yeah, presents a lot, a lot of, uh, complications. I know that. Friends even say that kind of too. If you're, you know, payroll, you can violate federal law. That's not going to have anything to do with this. They have extra month days. They could go, I think, those are bi-weekly days. Yeah.
I'm not sure if that's the timeline, but that's not stated.
Yeah, I don't know what the fall of the decision here tonight is going to be, but I know it's complicated. Um, and I know it's never in the best interest of, uh, of a township to function without a clerk. Uh, the clerk's job is a tough one. She does a lot. And, uh, without her in the office, uh, not going to be.
So gentlemen, do you? Dwayne and Mark, do you really think this is worth holding our township hostage? And preventing us from continuing to function?
Why?
Because we still, we still, e- even if you have an issue with her or whatever the case may be, I don't know what it is, why you basically agree to this. We still have an interim election that's coming. So we just have a short period of time. Is that truly worth screeching our township to a halt?
That's a great question.
Over, over whatever, whatever choice, whatever your reasons are, I don't care what they are, but whatever your guys' reasons are, is it truly worth when so many young people throughout so many other aspects of life have to just smile and deal with whatever is dealt to them?
So why not publish this in the paper for whatever 10 days?
Because it's still going to be 45 days.
We have up to 45 days.
Okay.
Okay.
And everything else, at the, in today's society?
We, we, we all think independently of here, okay? We all think independently for everyone in the township. Not you, not you, not anybody. For everybody in the township, okay?
Yeah, great. That's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah.
But, but this, the court remains. We do have a candidate. And, uh, sitting here willing to get, get.
I'm just saying, six months ago, we had the election. Nobody else ran.
Yeah. Right?
I mean, they had months to plan a campaign. This is what I want to do.
Yeah, and if the county does a special election and nobody is elected, nobody runs, where are you going from there? You know, that's a very real possibility because Mike just made a good point. Debbie was unopposed in the November election.
That's exemplary.
Yeah, I mean, for whatever reason, I asked her that one day about it. She said, nobody wants the job.
Yeah.
So anyway, whether that's correct or not, I don't know. But, but, uh, yeah. I just don't think this is going to happen. The township might go, if they were putting somebody in, in place nine, four years. I would definitely say, well, you know, that's a long time. This thing is over again. But, uh, we're just talking, uh, the timeframe between now and the term shift. So, uh, yeah, I, I understand we all have our likes and dislikes and concerns. I just don't think it's worth, uh, putting our township through what we're going to do in the next 45 days to, uh, not make a decision at any time. Because I don't think it's in the best.
Sure, can we? Debra, would you say how long to take it in the paper?
Um, it was in this. It'll be in next week, Wednesday's before.
Oh, I actually have another question because we're supposed to have her in your audit. And that will be tonight.
Yeah, we have our, our audit. I would like to, um, put Rachel Reed back in the next, um. She is the deputy clerk or was the deputy clerk. She knows all the intricacies of pay bills, of reporting, um, with our specific software. So it is not a burden to her. Um, to that, you know, her, her, um, and Dawn may have paid bills before or invoices, but she would not use that software in particular to do it. Uh, and, and the reports that go with paying the bill. So again, um, maybe she'll say yes, and then put Rachel back in the next.
Richard would have to put Rachel back, yeah.
I, I would like to see that.
In the interest of the township and the residents that I currently do serve, I will put my name back in.
Is there anything you'd like to, uh, say other than?
Thank you for your confidence. I will, I don't know. We do have a, um, office assistant, um, that has been an employee when I was on caring for my husband. So that's not an issue. She's very well versed in the building program and the front office procedures. So that's an option as well, um, when Rachel needs to step down from her position. Or if the board chooses to, you know, put those duties back on her, you know, however, what, uh, whatever she chooses.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Rachel Reed for, uh, interim clerk. For, uh, interim.
Okay, temporary clerk. Is, are, are we splitting apples here now?
Interim is chartered or just to the midterm.
Okay, till, till midterm elections.
All right, we have a motion for support. All right, we'll have to do another roll call vote. Uh, Richard, you do understand that for appoint you tonight, you have resigned your position.
I do understand. Yes, I understand.
All right.
Second here. Mike Rushing?
Uh, no.
Al Taitis?
No.
Mark Baranowski?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Well, it didn't count.
Well, how far did we get on that one? Are you, are you going to reprimand them now? Go, go, go for it.
All right.
No, I didn't say it wasn't a personal attack, but.
I said get it in the paper.
Exact, exactly, exactly.
I'm going to make a motion right now to publish this as quickly as possible. Get the position posted in the paper, and, uh, as soon as we, uh, as soon as that ad runs for 10 days is a deadline.
It doesn't have to go out one day. This is the deadline.
Okay.
Um, that they have so much time to do that, um, and after, after.
Oh, that's. So I'll have to include in my motion, uh, timeframe. Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to publish this for not longer than a week. And at that time, we will, uh, reevaluate probably through another, through another session.
Be in the 23rd paper. So if you, you call a special meeting for the end of that week, you want to say that's 44, like that.
Obviously, because I'm July meeting until the 6th, so it's probably, I'd call another special meeting at that point, if they're back. Maybe not the whole. So that's my motion. Is there support for that motion? I'll support it. All right. Uh, let's, we can just do a general poll on that, Richard. Motion is to publish this for a week, come back for another special meeting and make a decision. Hopefully, we'll have someone interested other than our own people here tonight. Of course, we'll include it as well. But, um, let's go ahead and vote on that. There's no other discussion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. I don't think there's any other word.
Alan?
Yes.
We have nobody working that. We publish this in the paper because you can't pay somebody that you're not getting paid, and they actually work with the township without getting a physical.
The assumption is that you will pay at the end of the month where the clerk is appointed. Um, so, no, whatever it is, we're in the clerk.
Yeah, I'm questioning the MTA over that. I'm calling the board to find out. We don't want to be violating any of the statutes. So we will make sure that we're within the law. It's just.
We generally get paid the last day of the month, which is the 30th. So if you have meeting on the 24th or 25th, you can appoint somebody to keep payroll for that end of the month. So we, again, will not be without our colleagues.
All right. Richard, that means the planning commission still have to be another pointer. Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try not to. We had a couple of questions upon here.
So what happens if we do this and end up in the same spot? I mean, I, I guess my question is, how many times are we going to?
Yeah. I don't know. We'll do it until we, uh.
We're going to, we're down to 45 days. The county has.
Yeah.
Point that we're wasting time.
Right. Yeah, we have 45 days. We don't want to save that time. We don't want to spend that time, but if we have it, if we have it, we can't make a decision.
Is there a date set when you're going to? Or are you just going to wait till the July week? Or are you going to do it back in June?
No, we'll call another special meeting as soon as we get the results of the publishing back, and we won't wait anymore.
She won't be able to speak.
Get right back here.
To get that week before that in the town paper?
The input is come. It will be in the paper.
So, all right. Well, they're, um, the office will make sure it's posted, published, and, uh, it's not for more than a week. And as soon as we get our results back at the end of that week, we'll call a special meeting. We're going to end up back here just by the yard with the same people that are interested in voting. That's the way it is. If that doesn't work, again, we'll be headed for a special election for the town. We'll see what happens. Doug?
Okay, please. Hopefully, you talk again today. Find out if it's official.
I'd love to. All right.
Find out, then be done somehow. Because you got to be away. This isn't the first time this has happened, you know, I'm sure.
The county board may have to step in at that point. And I don't know, but we can, a check cannot be given or assessed for anybody to house those two signatures. Yeah. So.
We'll find out. It's a learning experience for me, too. I've only been in one meeting, one other meeting when I was not supervisor or a supervisor appointment. And so, uh, it was different than just because there was enough, uh, agreement there to make an appointment. So they weren't deadlocked like we are here. Anyway, I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless the board has something else. All right.
I'll second that.
All right. It's important. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming on tonight.